The Vice Chair of the Commission, sitting in tonight for Floyd Graeble, who could not be here. Jackie, can you call the roll?
Commissioner Morris?
Here.
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 Commissioner Tricholtsky?
Here.
Commissioner Cravender?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Chair Staunton?
Here, thank you. Next up on the agenda is approval of the meeting agenda. Is there anything else to add to the agenda? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
So moved.
And a second? Any further discussion? Mr. Fisher.
Chair Staunton, was there, are we taking, is there anything that's dropped off the agenda for tonight, just in case somebody needs to know that might be here for?
Indeed, I was going to mention, after we approved it, but we can do it now, that the preliminary plat of Fairfax Fourth Edition, JMS Custom Homes for 6120 Brookview Avenue, has been continued until the meeting of March 28th, so two weeks from tonight. So if anyone is here for that meeting, we don't want you to be disappointed by staying and waiting for it, because it'll be continued. Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, I'd take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Did we already?
Second.
I'm off to a roaring start.
[laughter]
All right. Next up is approval of the consent agenda. Do we have anything on the consent agenda? Just the minutes from the regular meeting of the Adanna Plan and Commission of February 22nd. Jackie, I think you circulated those by mail to everyone. Any comments on the minutes? Hearing none, those will be filed, and I'd take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Next up is community comment. This is the time of the meeting when we invite members of the community to comment on a subject that is not on the agenda this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to take advantage of this opportunity? Don't all rush up at once. I see a number of students in the back. This is your opportunity to get extra credit on your assignment.
[laughter]
No takers, all right. Public hearings is the next item on the agenda. We have two items, or one item on public hearing. The first item is docket number B-12-01, an application for a setback variance from a right-of-way building and, Building Concepts and Design, 4115 Morningside Road. Chris, you want to present this to us?
Thank you. The subject property is located at 4115 Morningside Road. As highlighted, it is a corner lot. It's located in the southeast corner of Morningside and Grimes. This is an aerial photograph of that area. This is the hellsom question right here. The lot is 50 feet in width, but it's quite deep. It may be narrow, but there is quite a bit of lot area. A little more detail of it. What you'll notice is that the house is a little bit further back than the home that had been located to the east. And when I said "had been," there is a new home going up, right next door. It actually is currently in line with the existing house on the subject lot, as it fronts Morningside. So it has, this house, as it's in this photograph, is actually backed up the new home, to be in line with the existing home on the subject property. The subject property home is very close to the east lot line. It's a little over one foot away. There should be at least five feet for the minimum side yard setback. And then, the side street setback is also too close. In a situation where you have street frontages on a corner lot, and there are homes facing both streets, theoretically, you're supposed to be respecting the front yard setback of the home that's fronting Morningside, and then also along what would typically be a side street, you would need to maintain the front yard setback of the home to the south. The applicant is planning to tear down the existing home and rebuild it. This is the existing house, as you see it, if you're standing, looking at it, south on Morningside. And as you can see, it's extremely close to the adjacent property to the east. This is an existing survey of the house, and again, it's very close on the east lot line. It also is very non-conforming in terms of the side street setback. And this is the area in question, the setback along the side street or along Grimes Avenue. The home to the south is 21.7 feet away from Grimes, and that would be the required setback once that house is removed. The existing home is currently located 10.8 feet. There's a porch on the west side of the house that's 10.8 feet away, so it is non-conforming currently. This is the proposed house for the site, and they're actually going to be building it further away from Grimes Avenue than the existing home is right now. They are providing a 15-foot setback from Grimes, whereas the existing setback is 10.8 feet. They will be increasing the interior side yard setback along the east side to seven feet, and that's to compensate, it's the minimum five-foot setback, plus, they need two additional feet for height. There is a requirement that you add to the side yard setback for height. So the distance in the new home that's being built to the east and the proposed home will increase significantly. This is the elevations, as you are looking south at the home along Morningside. This would be considered the front of the house here. This is the elevation along Grimes Avenue. The side-loading garage would be coming off of Grimes Avenue, as it does today. The garage, actually, the opening will be 20 feet from that side street lot line. The only portions that are as close as 15 feet are this box bay window and this area and porch, but the rest of the home indents further away from the side street. This would be the east elevation, which does conform. It'll be seven feet away from the common lot line between the subject property and the property of the east. And then, this would be the south elevation of the sidewall of the garage. This is the floor plan of the house. What you'll notice is it is pretty narrow. The front of the house is about 13 feet. This is another, I think it's 14. So the width of the house is quite narrow. It's deep in the lot, but in terms of building opportunity, they still need a variance in order to accomplish the width of the house that they're proposing here. Is the proposed development reasonable for the site? Staff believes the proposal is reasonable for four reasons. The proposed use is permitted in the R1 zoning district and complies with all of the requirements, with the exception of that westerly side street setback. The home is appropriate in size and scale for the lot, and the improvements do enhance the property and not detract from the neighbors of the neighborhood. The most impacted neighbor, and I say "the most impacted" because, given the variance, it would be, the house to the south is actually 65 feet from the back wall of the garage. So, the ordinance is really meant to maintain a common even streetscape in front yard setbacks. In this instance, they're actually improving on that. The improvements will provide a reasonable use of the site and allow for a new home to be built further from Grimes than the location of the existing home. And again, the new home improves upon the required side street setback. It also improves upon that east side setback that is very close. There'll now be seven feet to that east sidewall. Will the variance relieve practical difficulties that prevent a reasonable use from complying with the ordinance? Staff believes the proposed variance is reasonable. The new home is more conforming to the current code than the existing home is. Are there circumstances that are unique to the property, not common to every similarly-zoned property that are not self-created? The unique circumstances that exist on the lot is that it is subject to two front yard setbacks, and the lot width, given those setbacks, makes it virtually unbuildable. It makes a very narrow building footprint. Will the variance alter the essential character of the neighborhood? No, the proposed home will be consistent with nearby homes within the neighborhood and will improve upon nonconformities that are already on the site. It will be farther from Grimes, and also, the new home will be farther from the easterly lot line. Staff recommends approval based on the following findings. With the exception of the variances requested, the proposal will meet the required standards and ordinances for the R1 district. The proposal will meet the required standards for a variance because the proposed use of the property is reasonable, as it is minimal, it is in a minimal encroachment into the street yard area in order to accomplish a new home. The practical difficulties in complying with the ordinances are the narrow building pad allowed by the current standards and given the lot width. Approval of any variance should be subject to the following conditions: subject to the survey date stamped February 27, 2012, and subject to the building plans and elevations date stamped February 23, 2012. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions from members of the commission? Let me just ask one while people are thinking. I went out and took a look today, and you mentioned that the house next door does not exist as it appears in the aerial anymore.
Correct.
And it looked to me like the two homes are really close together. Can you kind of explain what the circumstances are there, so that people understand that in case they've looked out at the site?
Sure. If you look at the aerial photograph, yes, the old home was much further away from the westerly lot line, and I'm speaking of the house that's next door, that's being built or the property next door.
Maybe if we pull up the, there was a photograph of the driveway there?
Sure.
Because I think right, right there.
Oops, back to.
One more. If you do one more, that one, right there.
Right.
And you can see that the driveway, because when you go out there today, that doesn't exist anymore, that driveway.
No.
Or?
There's a new home, and it's going in very close to this house. But this house is very non-conforming. It's right up to the lot line, the chimney is very close, the overhangs are extremely close. What's going to happen is, and it's non-conforming, this house is. The new house is conforming.
So the new house meets the five-foot side yard setback?
It does.
Okay.
Yes, it does. And, but the new home on the subject property will actually be seven feet away. So you'll have 12 feet of distance.
Between the two homes.
Between the two. It's just deceiving, because this existing house is so close.
Right, it's less than two feet, right?
Right. It's very close. And then, when you take into consideration the overhangs, it just, it looks like it's right there.
Yeah. Commissioner Platter?
Not to bring up the house that's being built right now, but I was out there looking at it, it looks like there's a window wall or something that's almost up to the property line.
There is. And there are no setbacks required for egress window walls.
There's no setbacks for that, but I mean, the structure's up, looks like a couple feet. That's, that's still allowed.
They haven't done their final grading, and there's going to be retaining walls along their side of the property. It's on the survey when they submit it for permit applications.
Okay.
So, the grade around the house, on the house next door, is going to change, and that is, it's an egress window wall on that, that's towards the front, right?
Correct, yeah.
Of the house, yeah. And that can be, it's actually not on the lot line, that's, it's, but it's very close.
Well, it's closer than five feet.
Oh, yes, yes.
So, maybe it's not on the lot line, but it's definitely closer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Commissioner Scherer?
Chris, looking at this picture that we have up, just so I can get a perspective, how wide is that driveway?
On the house, the lot next door?
Yeah.
You know, as I recall, the setback between that westerly wall, and I don't, you know, know how wide the driveway is, and the lot line, is about 10 feet, I want to say. So the driveway is a little less than that.
Seven?
Because there's a stoop, but I-
I'm just trying to visually see how far the two homes will be apart when we think of 12 feet going forward.
Right. What's difficult, though, is the house that you're looking at is so close, and it will be moving over another seven feet.
Right. Thanks.
Further questions?
We got one quick.
Commissioner Platter?
Do you know what they're doing with the trees in the backyard, or is that something to ask the applicant?
It's certainly something you can ask the applicant.
There's a lot, there's quite a few mature trees there.
Yeah. They've exted out some trees, you know, right where the driveway is, but it doesn't look like they've exted out trees to be removed south of the south wall of the garage, but that's certainly a legitimate question to ask. They can remove trees, we don't have a restriction on tree removal.
But they're asking for a variance, right?
That's correct. That's true.
Thank you.
Any further questions from the commission? Is the applicant or representative of the applicant present? Want to come up and tell us your story? Welcome. If you want to just state your name and address for the record, and then...
Doug Johnson. I'm the owner of Building Concepts and Design, 80 East Little Canada Road, in Little Canada, Minnesota.
Anything you want to add to what Ms. Zucker explained in terms of the application?
No, I, I don't. I guess a final decision hasn't been made on the trees. They haven't really decided if they want to keep them or not. If you look at, I don't know, do I need to put a picture back up? But if you look at the survey?
We can, if it helps.
Um, can we, can we put the picture of the survey back up that has the grade? This, this lot, if you went out and looked at it, the one side of the lot is about two feet lower than the rest of the neighborhood. It's lower than the street, it's lower than the, all the neighbors, all the way around to the east and to the south. So it kind of creates a little bit of a fishbowl right there. And I don't think he's all that crazy about having a pond in his backyard in heavy rain. So he may want to bring that grade up by about two feet, which would still be lower than the neighbor to the east. And it would be about six inches higher than the street, so that the water that's all pooling there can actually go to the street.
So you're talking the south end of the lot there?
Yes.
Where, where the...
Yes, and I think if that were the case, and you brought the grade up that two feet, that I think those trees wouldn't survive.
Ah, okay.
Now, it's not an absolute necessity that the grade has to come up, it is just a little bit of a concern of the person that wants to build the house here. So, we haven't asked for that yet, but that would be part of a grading permit that we would turn in with the building permit. So, that's all I have.
Commissioner Platter?
My other question is one right where the, it's about a 24-inch tree, plus or minus, right where that looks like the garage driveway is going in?
Yes.
Is there any chance of moving the, the driveway slightly to that tree survives? It's a huge tree there, I'm not sure what kind it is, but, I mean, it looks like, I don't like where these, these lots are coming and cleared out, you know, without some type of-
Yes.
-of representation or some thoughtfulness about what's there and can it remain? I know you're probably planting a lot of other things, but, I mean, that's a, that's a huge, huge tree there.
My, my thought would be that, I have yet to figure out what, what kills these trees when you try to do construction, and what doesn't. I've been told by arborists that you need to stay away from them, that the roots are about the same canopy as the leaves, and so you can't drive equipment on them, you can't pile dirt on them. And, over the years, I've, I've stayed away from these trees, and then, a year later, they're dead. One other case, I dug a garage that was like two feet from a tree that size, and 10 years later, the tree's doing just as good as it ever did. I can't figure it out, but I say that we would stay away from them, and my thought would be, you try to keep them, but, you know, you are, if you do do some grading over there, you're going to be adding some dirt to the roots, and I've been told that that kind of puts pressure on the trees, and they don't always make it. Now, that particular tree that you're talking about is probably the one that has the best case of surviving, because it's, it's higher right there where the grade is, it's kind of before it goes downhill. So I think that that one's probably got the best chance.
Oh, I see. Other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public who would like to comment on this application? Come on up. Just come on up, take, the side podiums are better for the microphones, and just tell us your name and address, and...
Is it, oh, it's on, all right. I'm Dave Chekki, I live at 4209 Morningside Road, which is two doors down across Grimes, there's a church on the corner there. So, I didn't get the variance announcement, I may have just lost it or whatever, but I assume it's because I can't see it. I don't know exactly what it is, but I wanted to come. I don't, I think I'm entitled to speak anyway, I don't want to break protocol. The one, of course, I respect the city's opinion on this. The one thing is, I would respectfully disagree with the, with the notion that this house and the other homes that are being built in the Morningside area are appropriately scaled for the neighborhood. You look at that new house that's being built next to it, you look at the house that the same builder's built, like, I think both, the same builder maybe owns the house next to it that's being built, so it feels kind of, you know, interesting in that respect. You know, people can do whatever they want, of course, but they built another one two doors down from me already. They're building another one two doors to the north on Crocker, or whatever that is. And the houses are at the limits, right? People are out with rulers, measuring setbacks all the time, because they're pushing the envelope on the height, they're raising the grade, then they're retaining walling up around the house to try to make it seem legit. And I'm sure it is, I'm not arguing that it's not, right? I know the city's been out looking at everything. But when I walk around the neighborhood with my neighbors, like, everyone's laughing about it and shrugging, and what can you do? And, and to me, like, well, one thing we can do is, we can deny a variance, right? At least, we can stick to the code that's written, for the reasons that it's written. And it's a small lot, and, and totally, my daughter grew up sledding on Skip Carlson's hill, but I don't have an emotional attachment to that house or anything like that. But the neighborhood, like, the stuff that's being torn down, in some cases, is very livable and scaled appropriately for, for people. And then, I would add, how many finished square feet is this house? How tall is it? Probably, it's probably right at whatever the, you know, lunatic height limit is, 38 feet or 38 and a half feet, as measured from the new elevated grade, right? And, and I just think that if this is one opportunity to exert some control on, on the stuff that's going on in that neighborhood, I would want to voice an opinion, take advantage of it. Of course, if people are within code, then what can you do? You come down here and scream and yell, and like, nothing, well, it's code, change the code. You know, what did they say? They said, "Adopt, you know, build a packet and hand it to people who are building homes." We really hope you don't build a third laundry room that's 10 feet from, 10 feet from the, three feet from the setback, or whatever, right? But, I don't know, I guess that's my, that's my deal. And I appreciate the, you all being informed as to the true height and magnitude of the structure that is being built, when it comes to finished square feet. I mean, the stuff is not, the stuff that's going in is not small, and it is not appropriate for the, it's a 50-foot lot! I mean, you saw the, you saw the profile, here's the street view, unquote, right? And it's like this teeny little thing, and then we got to make it a mile long and 40 feet high. Anyway, that's all, yeah. All right.
Thank you, Ms. Chekki.
Hi, Commissioners. My name's Pete Bjorki, and I am the person to the south of this new home that's going to be built. I'm 4307 Grimes. I'm right to the south of this lot. You know, first of all, I would kind of concur with Mr. Chekki that I'm kind of sick about what's happening to our neighborhood and all these quaint houses, and it's, we're wrecking a neighborhood. I mean, we truly are. If we're going to shove these massive houses on these tiny lots, you know, we may as well, you know, move to Kenwood. I, you know, I don't know. It's just, there's got to be an answer to this. We're just going deeper on these lots and up, and, you know, what used to be the highest roof in the neighborhood was the church. And I'm starting to wonder if that's the case anymore, you know? I'm mostly here because I'm concerned about, not so much the variance, but what was described as the fishbowl in this backyard. If you look at the survey, and I'm not sure that the elevations are all there, but I can attest that on most any given year, this time of year, when it thaws, that there is anywhere between two feet and 30 inches of water in that backyard as it exists. It's, it is quite a depression. And there's six yards to the east, up Morningside, and my yard goes 300 feet back. It's a real deep lot. But basically, all those dumped into this little holding area. It is a fishbowl, but it does fill up. And if we're going to bring this house, I don't know how many more feet is coming our way, and we're going to shorten up that fishbowl, let alone fill in it, I want to know what's going to happen to that water, because it's going to be in my basement. I can guarantee. It's, and I already have concerns about 4113, and hearing that there's going to be some retaining wall on the west side of that property, because as far as I'm concerned, all that's going to do is hold more water. And if that water has nowhere to go, it's going to, it's going to go in my basement. I mean, it's, it's an issue. That does turn into a pond, virtually, you know, nine times out of 10 times in the spring. It's a pond, until everything thaws, and, and it's pre-sandy soil around there, and yeah, it does settle down eventually. If there's extremely hard rain, it could collect some water. But usually, it's a springtime issue, when things are not thawed, that it holds water. And, I, I'm not sure, to my house, how far that new garage is going to sit on this train coming my way, but it looks like that yard is getting shortened up quite a bit.
And I'm just looking at the, at the map that we have in our packet, and it looks like your property, 4307, actually extends back adjacent all the way down to 4105 of Morningside.
Yeah, it's like six lots deep, yeah. It's 300 feet.
Okay, anything else?
Nope, that's, that's it.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bjorki. Hearing none, or while people think about whether they'd like to come up. Chris, can I just, a couple of questions. One, there were questions about height limits and about the new elevated grade. What is the height limit in this area with respect to this particular property, as well as that next door? And how did, can you, can you share with us how that gets measured, so that folks understand what the regulations are?
Sure. The maximum height is now, it's always been 30 feet to the midpoint of the roof. That hasn't changed. But then, we now have a maximum overall height to the ridge, which is 35 feet. And that is measured from existing grade, so even if they end up lifting things up a bit, which you can lift your first floor one foot above what's there right now, the measurement is taken from the existing grade, not what you're pulling it up to for overall height.
So when you and Commissioner Platter were talking, for instance, about the window wall and the fact that it looks like it sticks up, that there may be some additional grade, that doesn't change the starting point of the measurement?
For the overall height.
Right.
Now, for setback along the side yard, yes.
Yeah, I understand that, right.
I mean, it's measured from existing, but, I mean, proposed, pardon me.
And then, Mr. Bjorki was expressing, I think, understandably, concern about drainage. Can you share with folks, with us and with people who are here, what do we do about drainage? How, is that a city engineer? Is it a building inspector? How do we, how do we manage that here at the city?
A little of both. As they've submitted for permit application, it's reviewed both by the engineering and the building department, and they have to do, they have to complete a grading certificate along with it, so they have a plan, and that's reviewed at permit application and approved at that time.
And it certainly looks like, I mean, I guess, listening to Mr. Bjorki's comments, it sounds like this is a natural drainage pond for the neighborhood, or for a big portion of the neighborhood.
I won't argue that.
And so, is that kind of taken into account by, is it the city engineer, or is it, who, who from our staff kind of looks at that as this is getting processed through?
Both engineering and the building department. It's, it would be inspected or managed more by the building department, but it's reviewed also by the engineering department.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chris? Or comments in general?
Well, I just have a follow-up question. I, I think it's sort of an interesting issue. I mean, it certainly looks like this is the drainage for a big chunk of this block. And I wonder about, you know, I mean, that maybe historically has been that way, but is it the responsibility of one property owner to take the drainage of all the others? And do they, I would imagine, they have the opportunity to change their own lot. So in a case like that, let's say they came in and said, "We want to fill this pond, we want to, you know, put two feet of soil in here." What does the city do in that case? Do they, and maybe you can't answer what engineering would do, but I would assume they have to find an adequate outlet and get that water somewhere into the system.
And you're right. And you're right, I don't, I don't review those, but, um, I do know that you can't significantly change a drainage pattern as it exists today. And so, that's taken into consideration when they review it. Um, it's part of that reviewal process and part of the permitting process.
So, if you buy a lot that happens to be the neighborhood pond, then you need to keep it that way?
I think that is taken into consideration, but again, I, I don't do that review, that's something that is a function of the building permit application, um, and it is reviewed by engineering and building.
Okay.
Further follow-up on that item? Commissioner Scherer.
Um, Chris, one of the questions that was asked by the neighbors was how, rather than I doing the math, maybe you've already done it. How close does the proposed property come to 4307? Completed as described? How many feet would be between those two houses?
Uh, 65, I think I had that.
65?
Right.
Which is about half of the current?
I'd say that's probably about right.
Yeah.
Because it looks like the, the length is, the, the house is being backed up further from Morningside Road than where the existing house is now, because, um, the new home next door had to average the homes on either side, so they had to move the house back. So, now this house is forced to match the new home that's next door to the east. So, it is, uh, not going to be as close to Morningside as the house is right now.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Uh, let me ask at this time if there's any further comment from the public. Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Second? Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? All right, so the public hearing is closed. Further discussion by the planning commission. Commissioner Forrest.
Um, one thing that makes me a little bit sad is that Morningside has been identified as an historic bungalow district, and the city's been, there's been a lot of research in the last two years about that, and trying to document the, the history of the area as a streetcar community, and also to, um, try to help residents preserve, and their bungalows as they are. So, it's a bit sad that we're losing one, and that's just a comment. And another comment is that I'm concerned about the east facade. It goes for 98 feet with no planer brake in the facade. So, the house next door is going to be looking at this big, long, tall wall with a few little smallish windows, well, it's to the size of the area. And in theory, I'm in favor of, of the variance right now, because of the, um, some of the improvements in the setbacks, but I also am concerned about the drainage issue, and with a variance, you can put conditions on it, and perhaps we at least direct the, uh, city to take a very close look at how this will impact the neighbors, and/or the, um, the new home be responsible for addressing water issues that could impact the neighbors negatively.
Commissioner Carpenter.
On that subject, um, I almost wonder, and I, I, I kind of agree with what, uh, Commissioner Forrest was talking about in terms of, uh, concerns about the facade, but also, I'm more, more thinking towards the, uh, the issue with respect to drainage. And I wonder if, I don't know what we've done previously along these lines, but it certainly wouldn't be uncommon in a commercial development where you would impose a condition that the drainage, uh, cannot be, um, uh, cannot be increased, or, or that the, or that the, uh, the, whatever the drainage is on the site, has to, has to stay on the site, and cannot be, uh, extended to other adjoining sites. And I, I don't know if that's, uh, if that's an available option for us or not, and...
My, uh, Chris, maybe you can help us on this. My general understanding is the obligation of the homeowner is not to increase the rate of runoff off of their own property.
Correct.
Um, so I don't know, you know, I mean, this is a, it's a tricky issue, you know, I think Commissioner Fisher, you were talking about it earlier, about this notion, when you happen to have the neighborhood drainage pond, uh, historically on your property, does that obligate you to continue to field all of that? Um, I think the legal obligation is not to increase the rate of runoff off of your property. Commissioner Forrest, you have a comment?
And I do believe we could put, um, some type of condition on this, uh, to address it, even if it's, at least for, um, heightened scrutiny on the part of staff when they review the drainage issue. And we can note also that the, now the lot coverage is being maximized stout to 24.7% of the lot, where it was significantly smaller, probably about half that much before. So, not only are we possibly altering the plant, the, um, the level of the, of the backyard, but we're also increasing the lot coverage, which gives less space for water to go and to filter on down, uh, through the ground. Uh, I was wondering, Chris, is there any, um, anything that addresses if somebody does drain like that, uh, increasing the water drainage onto the streets and into the storm sewers, or is there nothing, any, there aren't any regulations regarding that, or? Because he, the proponent mentioned, uh, something about directing the water runoff to the street, and I was wondering, I mean, you can do that, I mean, that's a, that's what, generally what you'd like to see occur?
If that's permitted, then, and if that's encouraged, and if that would address that problem, then it seems to me that the drainage issue is fundamentally addressed by doing that. My, unless I'm missing something.
Commissioner Platter.
I think part of the issue is that things draining from 4307 or those other backyards from Morningside can't make it to the street. If that's, if they, they fill in that spot, how does that drainage make it to the street, where now it's, good or bad, it's draining in somebody's existing backyard?
So, what happens to all of that drainage now, that used to go there and pond somewhere else, or next to somebody else's building, or, or something? I think that's my concern here.
Which, drainage from where to where?
Drainage from back here.
Right.
If you fill this in, it...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Stays there. If, I don't know all the grades here, but if, I think that's what the comments were, is it's...
It's coming.
It's stuck, it's stuck from the other yards versus if you fix this one, those are all unfixable.
Well, let me just to jump in, you know, if, if this wasn't a variance, if there wasn't a variance application in front of us, I assume that there is, and, and the, you know, the variance application, and I think the narrative stated it pretty well, saying, "Look, if, if I'm gonna, because it's a corner lot, if I'm gonna comply with this side yard setback that's driven by the house to the south, and the front yard setback, which is driven by the house to the east, I can only build within a 23-foot wide envelope." Now, they could build within a 23-foot wide envelope and go all the way back through that drainage pond, and make it a lot longer than that. Well, as, as long as they met the lot coverage. So, they could go further back even than they're going down.
They already did, this is bothering.
Right, but if they didn't go as wide, and they didn't seek a variance, they could go even further back into that. And we wouldn't have anything to say about it, other than whatever the building department and the engineering department would do with respect to the draining. So, while I understand the drainage issue, I do think it's not an issue that we end up, and I'm not sure how it affects this, the variance that's in front of us, other than I think it has to be, you know, they're, whatever they do on that property, they're gonna have to live up to the obligations under the code and under the city's regulations to not increase the rate of runoff for their neighbors. Um, and so, Mr. Bierke's, um, concern about his, his basement is well-taken, and, and, you know, there shouldn't be a situation where he's increasing that runoff. In terms of the variance, you know, as I understand it, Chris, if this was an interior lot, so in other words, if this was the building next door, they'd have the opportunity on side yard setbacks to do, what, five and seven, is that it? Or is it five feet on either side?
Five feet on either side.
So, they're required to stay 15 feet from the side yard. And in fact, they're meeting that. Is that right?
Well, they're supposed to match the house to the south, and they're at 21.7, and they're going to be 15.
That's the...
This, this is what's sitting here.
So, instead of 21.7, if it was an interior lot, they could be five feet from the side yard?
Yes.
Okay. So, the variance that they're in front of us for is whether, whether they can be excused that seven extra feet because of the circumstances of this corner lot?
The existing house is closer, it's at 10.8 feet.
Right, so even the 15 feet is making it better than the way it is existing?
Yes.
Commissioner Fisher.
And I guess just following up on that, you know, this corner lot, very narrow corner lot, is sort of the classic case for hardship and of granting of a variance. And I completely appreciate what the neighbors are saying, it's frustrating to see these large houses, um, being built in a neighborhood of bungalows and smaller houses, um, but, you know, we, there's not a lot we can do about some of that, that's the market doing their thing, and, you know, unless we completely change all the rules. The fact is, in this, you know, to, to say, "Let's take this lot and, and force them to build a 22 or 23-foot wide house," um, I don't think is the answer either. So, in, you know, and when you look back at when we've granted variances, it's invariably on these corner lots, or sort of that classic case, and I can't think of too many times, if ever, that we haven't granted a variance based on that type of hardship. And this is one of the more extreme ones I've seen.
And I, you know, Mr. Checky's comments were, um, were understandable. I, I went out there and I took a look today, and I went out not realizing that the next door neighbor's house was also being changed, and it, it's, it's a big difference. It creates a real different feel, but I'm assured by staff that that fits within the, the height limits and the lot coverage limits and the setback limits, and so, they're entitled to do that. Um, we have wrestled on this planning commission, and I know at the city council over the years, about how do you manage that kind of change in character in a neighborhood, and what kind of regulations should we put in place? And, um, for better or worse, the regulations that we have now are the ones that we've decided to live with for now. So, um, in the context of this variance, we can't, we can't stop somebody from, uh, building all the way to the envelope, as you, as you, um, I think eloquently put it. Other comments? Commissioner Forrest.
But just for those people who are mentioning height... I'm sorry, uh, those people who are mentioning height. The proposed height, as it, as we received, uh, the plans was 29.7 feet. And it's for this reason that I would like it, if, if our, we looked at, um, ordinance changes going forward that addresses massing of new construction on non-conforming lots, just in order to, um, I'm not sure, I have no details on how we do that, but it seems to be a concern throughout the city, and it might be something to consider going forward.
Further comments or discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I'd be happy to make it. Uh, let me preface this by saying that, uh, the discussion on drainage, uh, has caused me to rethink my earlier comments, and I think I concur with, with what Chair, um, what's his name?
You're just doing that to make me feel better.
Chair Staunton, um, had articulated. So, I, I'm on board with that, quite frankly. And with that in mind, uh, I would then make a motion to approve the variance. Take into account the staff report, uh, contents of the staff report, conditions, et cetera.
Is there a second? Commissioner Platter.
I just have a comment overall. I, I live in this neighborhood, and it, and it's very sad to see all these houses torn down, and these large, large homes put up. Having said that, I think it's very difficult for the city to regulate the market and what people want, so unless the city wants to change the ordinance or something, I, I, it's very difficult to, to, uh, to say much on this. I mean, the variance is definitely hardship on this corner here, but again, just for the record, it's, it is disappointing, all these large, built-out houses are everywhere, and the house next door to it didn't need any variances. That's, that's, that's what the code allows, so, um, maybe there is something the city should be looking at.
Further discussion? All right, hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? The motion passes, and the variance is granted. I would ask, um, Chris, if you can make a note, I think, um, the members of this commission have expressed some concern about the drainage that Mr. Bierke brought up, and it would be helpful if city staff at the building department, as well as the city engineering department, were alerted to the kind of special care that we ought to take to making sure that that issue is addressed properly.
I will take care of that.
Thank you. Uh, the next item on the agenda, that concludes our public hearings. The next, uh, item on the agenda is reports and recommendations, and, uh, the first item, or the only item on that, is a sketch plan review for 7171 France Avenue in Edina. Chris?
Thank you. Thank you.
While you're teeing this up, let me just, let me just share some thoughts that I have about kind of how to go about this. For those folks who are either watching or are here tonight, um, and aren't familiar with it, we have recently adopted the sketch plan review process in Edina, and the, and we had lots of conversation about this at the planning commission, and the purpose behind it for us was to make sure that we gave folks who were developing property an opportunity very early in the process to share the concepts behind what they're thinking about, at a time when they're not, they don't have so much invested that they can't be flexible and be responsive to concerns that are expressed by the planning commission and the council. And so, what we're here tonight to do is not to hold a public hearing, not to see detailed plans, but to, to see the, the concept and, and the ideas that the developer is putting forward. And, um, we have had a chance to do this on two or three occasions, and I think we're continually working to try and improve the process of communicating clearly with developers as they come in front of us. So, what I'm gonna suggest we do tonight is, Chris is gonna give us kind of an overview of the project and the proposal from the staff perspective. Then I'm gonna ask the developer, the applicant, to come up, share what their vision is for it, um, and then, and then return it to the commission. And when we talk about it, I'd like to suggest that we, we take a little more structured discussion. In the past, when we've looked at these, we've all kind of gone around the table and thrown out ideas. Um, I'm gonna suggest we try a little more structure, maybe first looking at, what do we think of the kind of, um, proposed use of the property? Second, looking at, um, what do we think of the proposed site plan for how that works? Third, what do we think of the design features, uh, within the structures that are proposed? And then, if there are other comments that go along with that. And I'm hoping that what that'll do for the applicants is give you a little more structured feedback, so you can walk out of here tonight with a, a sense of how we're feeling about it, and, and will enhance the purposes behind this, uh, this sketch plan review. So, with that, Chris, if you can give us your report.
Sure. Thank you, Chairman. The subject property is 7171 France Avenue. It is the Byerly's site, located in the southeast corner of Hazelton Road and France Avenue. The site consists of a Byerly's grocery store with surface parking on the west side of the building, as well as the south side of the building. The loading docks and, uh, loading areas are... The loading docks and loading areas are behind the building. The property is zone PCD3, planned commercial district three. Surrounding land uses include, to the south is the Macy's Home Store, to the east is the city's promenade and the old Szechuan Star Restaurant. To the north is Rue de France Shopping Center, and then to the west is France Avenue. It is zone PCD3, with much of the property surrounding it similarly zoned. That's a photograph of the existing Byerly's as it exists today. The planning commission is asked to consider a sketch plan proposal to redevelop the Byerly's site. The applicant is proposing to tear down the existing Byerly's building and replace it with two new buildings, a 52,000-square-foot Byerly's with a 96-unit, seven-story apartment on top, which would be here, the south building. And a second building, which is 19,000 square feet, it's a retail building with then 67-unit apartment on top of that. Parking for the building would be underneath both of the buildings. Loading areas would be behind the buildings, facing the promenade. Primary access to the sites would be off of Hazelton Road. There would be two curb cuts. And then also, a pass-through would be introduced to the Macy's site, so that traffic could go through the Macy's parking lot and then out to France Avenue. The property is zone PCD3, which allows for retail as a permitted use and multi-residential as conditional uses. The applicant would be seeking a rezoning of the property to PUD planned unit development. The applicant is requesting sketch plan review to solicit comments from the planning commission and city council. Opinions or comments provided to the applicant by the planning commission and council shall be considered advisory only and shall not constitute any binding decision for the request. There are several variances that are required based on the PCD3 zoning standards. From the front of, or front setback, which would be the front along Hazelton Road, there's a 34-foot variance. The requirement is for a 102-foot distance, and they're proposing a 68-foot distance from the building to the lot line adjacent to Hazelton. The building height, it would require six-foot variance. The ordinance allows for eight stories or 96 feet, whichever is less. The buildings are 102 feet tall. The maximum floor area ratio is allowed at 50%. They're, they're proposing it at 69%, so a 19% variance for maximum floor area ratio. And then the number of enclosed stalls for the apartment buildings, the requirement would be 163. They would be providing 146, so there would be a 17-stall variance. Under the PCD3 guidelines, they are requesting a PUD, which would allow the ordinance to be crafted around the development, the setbacks, the height, all of those. These are renderings and elevations, a view from southeast Macy's property line, an aerial view from southeast, a view at the entry drive. You can see at the very far end is Byerly's. And then an aerial view from the northwest, if you're looking down at the front of the building, from France Avenue. This would be an aerial view from the northeast, as well as a street-level view from northeast. The property does back up to the promenade, and portions of the promenade plan were included in your packet. The plan does specifically address the back portion of the Byerly's site for a pond, stream, fountain feature. A little more detailed, the promenade plan does show a pond, possibly with a waterfall and a fountain feature, with both bike paths, as well as walking paths and other landscaped improvements are suggested for that area. It also is incorporated in some parts of the Macy's site. This would be the promenade path recommendations. And again, a little more detailed area, the Byerly's site is outlined in red. This is what was prescribed in the plan. And then this would be sort of the recommendations for a water feature sculpture. It's not a, it wouldn't be a drainage pond. This would be a, it would be a feature with, including a fountain and sculpture as part of the promenade. The proposed plans do not create an active pedestrian streetscape environment. It is more of a traditional suburban style of development, with the parking lot in front of the building and the loading in the back, which is right up against the promenade. In this instance, the back of the building does back up to the promenade, while there are sidewalks and greenway connections to the promenade. The proposed development does not take advantage of the amenity that the city has, also has prescribed for the area. The purpose and intent of the PUD district is to provide comprehensive procedures and standards intended to allow more creativity and flexible, flexibility in design, to provide for establishment of PUD districts in appropriate settings and situations to create or maintain a development pattern that's consistent with the comprehensive plan and promote some more creative and efficient approach to land use, provides for variations to the strict application of the land use regulations, and that it would ensure high quality of design and design compatibility with surrounding land uses, and maintain or improve the efficiency of public streets and utilities, and preserve and enhance site characteristics, including natural features, wetlands, trees, open space, scenic views and screenings, allow for a maximum, allow for a mixing of land uses within the development, encourage a variety of housing types, including affordable housing, and also ensure the establishment of appropriate transitions between different land uses. To be eligible for a PUD district, all developments should be in compliance with the following, that the site of the proposed PUD is designated for more than one land use. Any PUD which involves a single land use or type of housing type may be permitted, provided that it is otherwise consistent with the objectives of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan. The permitted densities may be specifically stated in the appropriate plan development designation and shall be in general conformance with the comprehensive plan, and that the setback regulation, building coverage and floor area ratios of the project most closely related to the conventional zoning district shall be considered and be appropriate, but may not be departed from the accomplished in purpose and intent of the ordinance. While the proposal would be an improvement over the existing building and use of the site, staff is not sure that the proposal would rise to the level of meeting the purpose and intent of the PUD. The proposal is more typical of a traditional suburban development that does not create a pedestrian-friendly environment or engage the adjacent streets or the promenade. Boulevard-style sidewalks along France Avenue and Hazelton Road should be added. They weren't in the sketch plan. Due to the retaining law along France Avenue, the sidewalk may have to be elevated above in a set of stairs to go down to the bus stops. Connections from the retail uses needs to be added and should be required in addition to the full connections to the promenade. Regarding traffic, a traffic study would need to be completed to determine the impacts in adjacent roadways. And regarding sewer capacity for the area, the city engineer has expressed concern in regard to sewer capacity. This issue, again, will also have to be examined closely as part of a formal submittal, with upgrades and cost sharing for those upgrades perhaps required. With that, I will stop and answer questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions from members of the commission at this time? Seeing none, I will ask the applicants to come up and share their application with If you could just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about the plan.
My name is Greg Anderson. I live at 4212 Oakdale Avenue in Edina. I'm one of the partners with Anderson KM Builders, and we're here representing the Lunds Food Corporation regarding this redevelopment. As also this evening, speaking in more detail regarding the plan will be Paul Holmes with Pope Architects. And also to answer questions, you may have Jennifer Kent is here with Lunds Foods. I wanted to back up a little bit and give you some ideas and some information about how we were originally asked to look at this property. A couple of things that Lunds had brought to our attention that were very important to them were the following. One, the store, the existing store needed to stay in operation for the life of the construction activities. It was very important to them. And this plan allows this to happen. We can speak in more detail to that as required. Also, it was very important to them, from a retail perspective, to maintain the main entrance of their store, the new store, facing west toward France with the parking in front. That was a big component to them. And last but not least, was also to have a significant separation between the primary loading dock and trash area from the main entrance. Those are some components that were important to, to the, our client as we started and as we engaged in design. But we've been working on the design on and off. Lunds Foods has been active with another project downtown for the past year, so we were actively, you know, on again, off again, a little bit with this design, and been working with it now for just about a year. We did meet with staff and discussed different options for a few of the entrances. This entrance here, Paul will speak in more detail to some of these items. We did speak with staff regarding the entrance here, this entrance up at the adjacent property, and also the potential future access with Macy's. We, we also have contacted Macy's, and they are, we are in conversation with them regarding some shared opportunities with the promenade and the ponding between the Lunds property and Macy's property as well. Nothing, nothing in writing with them, but activity and conversations are underway. And with that, we respect and look forward to your comments tonight. We wanted to come in for the sketch plan review. As you can tell, a lot of detail isn't there yet on the plan, and that's intentional. Our goal was to get comments regarding this, through this process, go back to the drawing boards and see what we could do. So with that, I'll hand the mic over to Mr. Holmes, and he'll have a chance to talk in more detail about the site.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Welcome, Mr. Holmes.
Thank you. Again, my name's Paul Holmes. I'm with Pope Architects, and we've been working with Lunds and with Greg Anderson for the last year, off and on, on the design of this. We do welcome the opportunity to be here in a less formal context, and while there is a lot that can be changed on the plan, we really value the kind of input we can get tonight, and just want to endorse the process. We're very happy that it's, that it's here and that we can avail ourselves of it. One thing that I would say about the project is that it is a mixed-use project, and that it consequently focuses itself both to France Avenue and to the promenade. Rather than turning its back on the promenade and placing the loading feature there, instead it places the housing use, entrances to the Phase 1 housing tower and the Phase 2 housing tower, against the promenade, with parking dedicated to that housing, so that those who are coming to their homes can come to that side of the building adjacent to the promenade, to the entrances, to the underground parking, and can make the connection from their entrances to the promenade through the pedestrian way that's provided. The other side of the development faces France Avenue, and it's the retail side. And the design purposefully tries to separate those uses, the traffic, for the most part, between them, and the pedestrian traffic between them as well. It is difficult, as you might imagine, in a grocery business to completely conceal loading. It's a, it's a vital part of retail and more so in the grocery business. We have tried to locate the dock in such a way that it, first of all, does not conflict visually with the entry to the housing, which faces to the north. If we had swung that dock so that its face was to the north, those arriving would see not only this very elegant, we hope, arrival for the housing, but also the face of the loading dock. On the other hand, we wanted to respect the promenade, and so have tried to skew the dock, cover it, shield it, so that it is not in view, at least for long, on the promenade, and to provide some hint of the kind of planting and screening and perhaps birmingham that we could do in order to shield it further from view. Something to say about the height of the building. The height is driven, in this eight-story context, by the need of Lunds to have about a 24-foot clear grocery store. And that drives that overall height of that building up, about the extra six feet. 46,000 square feet of the store is on grade. There's about 6,000 square feet that's in a mezzanine level for administrative use, and that's how we get to the total 52,000 square feet. But we need that added volume in order to do that. And that brings the footprint down to the point where we can build it while keeping the existing store in business and customers moving safely back and forth there. In terms of the architecture of the building, I can tell you that we've had some ideas about the architecture, both on the retail side and on the housing side. Those will become much more firm as a housing partner is selected and engaged and begins to weigh in on the design and the image and the brand of the housing that they want to be a part of. We welcome your comments on it, but it, simply to say that it's a placekeeper for now, which is why it's sort of grayed out in the, in the images that you have. Again, we are welcome, we welcome your comments and any questions you might have.
Sorry, was there more presentation you have, or is that completed?
I don't think so. I think we really do welcome your comments.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Who wants to start? Commissioner Carpenter?
Oh, wing it. Just have a laundry list of, of things that are in no particular order. I'm not sure if I'm going to completely adhere to.
Well, let me do this. Let's, let's, so if there's some questions about what Mr. Holmes or Mr. Anderson presented, things that you don't understand or want to just flesh out a little bit, let's do that. Then what I'd like to do is turn to a little more structured conversation about, you know, thoughts that the commission has. So if you'd indulge me on that, if we can just start with any, any questions, and then we'll go to kind of part by part, go through the use and the structure. Commissioner Fisher?
I do have a question about the, let's call it the east-west location of the new Byerly's store. So I understand you have to push it, you're pushing it as far south as you can to avoid the existing building. Is it the, it looks like there's a utility going through. Is that's what, is what driving the easterly location? And how much of a driver do you think that really is?
In part, it's the utility easement that comes through. We prefer not to relocate that if we didn't have to. But primarily, it's a segregation of retail parking from housing parking, and wanting to make sure that the retail parking is on the France Avenue side of the store.
So having enough volume of it up there.
Yeah. And then dealing as well with the, with the grades that there are from the existing Byerly's elevation, the elevation of the new store, and the France Avenue elevation, and the need to get a loading dock in facing France. You'll see it covered and shielded there, but there's a small dock there that serves the deli side of the grocery.
That would be my next question. So there's the mini dock, and then there's the big dock?
That's right.
And they, they function differently?
They do. They do.
Is that happening today? At Byerly's?
We have a dock on each side. I would call it the north and the south side. And the reasoning behind that is the produce would be in that front area, so you might have produce delivered there, rather than running it all the way across.
You know what? Okay.
But it wouldn't be semi trucks in that front.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Schroeder?
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. I have a question on kind of a broad scale. The PUD, when we conceived of it as a planning commission, advocated for implementing it, and I think the city council eventually agreed, we had this idea that we'd be going through a process that would allow both the developer and the community to gain something that wouldn't be able to be achieved through the normal zoning of the site. And so the question I have to start out is really simple. I can see what the developer would get. There's some relief in height and other things. But what does the community get? What is extraordinary about this?
Well, I think to the extent that there's, and others may have something to say about this as well, but my view is that to the extent that the density on the site, that the multiple uses on the site are of benefit. are of benefit to the community in terms of creating a livable community and creating the kind of connection between retail and housing and between adjacent businesses and neighborhoods that this would bring, this is a benefit to the community. We would certainly want to enhance it and make whatever changes we could in order to make it the, the best it can be. But the, the use and the, certainly the tax base that, that is brought here with a development of this sort, I think is an important factor to consider.
And it's a good question. It is a broad, a broad-based question. It certainly is. I think the Lund's Corporation looking to invest in the store says a lot for what the community gets out of this. If the, if the, our client was choosing just to put in a new store, they could without a variance and go ahead and invest in a, in a new store for the area. There are others in, in the location. There's the Cub, there's Target, there's the new Whole Foods down the street. But at the same time, this particular client of ours wants to invest there. As Paul had mentioned, the tax base is there. We've talked about working together for the feature in the back, the ponding feature. And I know there'll be probably some shared costs to that. We don't know what that means yet and we haven't taken it to that detail. But in what the community gets from this, I think it gets a new piece of real estate that, no disrespect, Jennifer, is a little tired right now with the Byerly's store. And the Lund's Corp. and other joint venture groups that we're talking to are very interested in making that investment.
Further questions at this time? Commissioner Shear?
I'm sort of struck by the, the proposed use for the property. And I, I guess I would ask Chris perhaps, or the developer, which I'm sure they've done these studies. What are our current occupancy rates for this sort of housing, Anidana? The need escapes me a little bit just as I drive around town, but perhaps I'm wrong.
I can speak to that. We worked with Maxfield Group and got responses for a variety of housing types. We looked at for-sale condos and, yeah, I did say that out loud. And we also looked at senior housing potentially. And the one with the largest, I guess, demand gap that we found was market rate housing, market rate rental housing in excess of 200 units. Even with all the activity that's going around and being talked about around Southdale and other locations, they took that into account and we were looking at that data relative to this size of housing units at this location.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, anything to add to that from the staff perspective? Commissioner Carpenter?
On that same question, I mean, I, I agree that, that in terms of where, where development as market rate housing is, is just about what everybody seems to want to do. But I think it's also been perceived as the panacea for where the economy is right now. And I think there's maybe a lingering question as to, you know, five, 10 years from now, whether market rate housing is going to be what it, what it is now. I don't know if you have any thoughts or comments as to long-term what that, what that use would be.
Well, it's a, it's an interesting industry question. And us developers gnaw our teeth and our fingernails on that every day when we try to go after a project. You know, you can, you can look at this and say, as a developer, are we behind the curve? Are we ahead of the curve? Are we going to have the product online in time? It's to be determined. We think it's a good use for the site, a good common use. Their, their more urban setting downtown with Lund's underneath housing downtown, it's, it's counter housing downtown, for-sale housing, has done very, very well. And they're excited about this particular use. It's hard for us to make a statement, and we're getting some of that information from some housing folks that we're talking to about, is it the right thing to do now? Is it the right thing to do in 15 years? That's a development risk that we've chosen to take along with groups that we're talking to right now. Hard to answer that definitively.
No, I know it is.
But it's a, it's a risk reward thing that all of us face in this industry right now.
Commissioner Platter?
I just have a question. Maybe it's, it's a little theoretical, but the restaurant on the back there, has there been any consideration of purchasing that, including it in this parcel and projecting something, housing along that whole promenade? And you'd have that develop more of a scale and a lot more there to go with that versus kind of a chunk in there? Just a thought.
That thought came across our minds several, several times. We have spoken with the landowner. Lund's has spoken directly with the landlord. Cressa representing Lund's has spoken with that landowner several, several times. Most recently, I think just a couple of weeks ago. A deal has not been cut by any means and we're quite a ways apart. And we respect that landowner's desire to sell their property for the price they think they can get. Are we finished talking to the Wolfson Group? Not necessarily, but we've tried. And we were not by any, in any means aggressive enough to try to put that on their plan this evening. But there has been conversation.
Any further questions? Commissioner Shear?
Ashel.
Okay. Commissioner Forrest? I saw you moving to the microphone.
That's because I'm not sure if it belongs right now or later. But.
Do your best.
My question is, how, what have you considered? How do you plan to foster, encourage pedestrian movement on the site?
I'm going to get in your category a little bit, Paul. But what we wanted this evening was to get a feel for the areas that were more sensitive and more concerning to you relative to pedestrian traffic. We had talked to staff about this in the past, talked about it with, with Chris and also with Carrie. What we wanted to do were, were to enhance the areas specifically to the promenade and have some real comfortable traffic patterns for pedestrians on and off the promenade to the housing entrance to the east. What that is yet, we wanted to get more feedback as we started to design that. We didn't take it to that detail. We don't know what that'll be yet. And we know that pedestrian accessibility around the site is important as well, along Hazelton and along France. We don't know what that'll be yet either. But we have to combine the comments that we get tonight with the needs and desires of our client and the joint venture housing partner to come back to you with that.
To follow up, but what, what about on the site itself? Between the buildings, around the buildings, parking areas and things like that?
I, I believe there, we're going to have well-marked areas between sidewalks on France, sidewalks on Hazelton. And also good way-going, if you will, so that people know that this is the path they travel for pedestrian. We're going to try to keep them away from traffic patterns of retailers that are coming to buy groceries or going to the retail on the Phase 2 building. And that has to be vetted out yet. We've had these buildings in different locations, set back further east, further west. But that's still to be determined.
Okay, let's, I think that fleshes things out pretty well. I'd like to, consistent with what I was suggesting at the beginning, have us get some, some comments. And I assume Mr. Anderson, Mr. Holmes and Ms. Kent, we may be calling on you as we're kind of noodling through this. But what I'd like to do is kind of focus our initial comments on the proposed uses and then move to the proposed kind of site design. And then finally to the proposed structure design, if you will. And that hopefully will give you a more collated feedback here. So who wants to start in on, on the uses? Commissioner Fisher?
I like them. I mean, I think for a long time, as you know, you know, we worked pretty hard when the Target store was being reconfigured to see if there was any way we could get some housing as part of that development. I think this is, this is a great way to do it, a great way to activate the promenade. And, you know, there's certainly a lot of details to be worked out. But from the concept perspective of housing on top of this retail in this location, I think it's great.
Other comments on use?
Oh, and I just want to add one more thing. I'm not bothered by the height. I mean, to make the, the slight variation that would be required based on what the current zoning would be for the reasons it's being proposed, I wouldn't be overly concerned.
Commissioner Forrest?
I guess I'd like us and the applicant or proponent to take into consideration the objectives that are in our ordinances, 850.01, regarding mixed-use developments and also the specific points that are to be encouraged in development in the Southdale area. And that includes green spaces, public art, landscape buffers, all those kinds of things.
So with respect to the mixed-use proposal, though, how are you feeling about that?
I guess, I think it's incomplete. At, at least by definition in our ordinance, mixed-use, well, it can encompass so much more than just housing and retail.
So you're suggesting perhaps other uses should be mixed in? If so, what other things do, what are you thinking?
Well, part of that comes from my suggestions later on, but.
Okay, I don't want to blur the lines.
I'd like to see some, perhaps, well, more encouragement of an active pedestrian environment and pedestrian access and movement on the site. I was looking at that second retail building and thinking, what an ideal place to have a, a through hallway, kind of like you, Dyna 50 does at 50th and France, and use it as a gallery space for local artists. I mean, there are a lot of ways that this can really be a flagship outstanding example. And you have such presence in the community. I think it's, it'd be great to work together on, on coming up with something that goes beyond just, well, this works. I mean, let's make it a stellar example of what can be done in considering the community on a more holistic level.
Other comments on the use, reactions to the use?
I'm going to actually largely mirror Commissioner Fisher's comments. I, I do think that the, the mixed-use of rental and retail and grocery, which is retail also, makes a lot of sense. Obviously, some of that rental is going to be driving business right down to, to Byerly's as well, which is, I'm sure, something they've thought about. But by and large, I think that the concept from a use perspective works. I do have some lingering concerns about where market rental is going to be years to come because there's been such an explosion of it. But I can't predict it and obviously I don't know who can.
Well, I'll jump in while as you're thinking. I'm, I'm a fan of the mixed-use and I take, you know, I'm trying to think about, as a planning commissioner, what, what this area is going to be like, you know, 10 years, 20 years in the future. And I think one of the things we're trying to do in Anidana is, is really support, you know, the, the kind of businesses and tenants that are likely to be in the commercial areas down in that area. And if you look, for instance, at Centennial Lakes and, and other places, there's a lot of folks who, there's a lot of employment there. And, and if we're going to have people coming to this area, how are we going to create kind of a complete area where, you know, people want to be in a work environment? Where people want to be living? Where people want to be recreating? Where people want to be buying groceries and doing other retail things? And so I'm a big fan of having, you know, having these kinds of mixed-use, having people. I think the, the promenade is something we've been trying to jumpstart for a long time. And I think you need people to have the promenade. It doesn't do any good to have an empty park. And so having residential uses in this area along with the retail uses makes a lot of sense to me. Other thoughts before we move off this? Commissioner Platter?
Yeah, quick comment. I, I would agree. I think this is a good use for the site. My comment would be, you've got this large area and it just seems to be, it needs, seems like it, there should be a village here somehow, if that makes any sense. So it's, it's much more pedestrian-friendly. You have other uses around here, maybe, you know, at other retail. In other words, is it kind of a self, maybe not self-contained community? But it's really a place that people would want to go. They wouldn't necessarily have to leave there to, to get, to get much. Obviously, you have the great Byerly's grocery store there for that. But, you know, other things, be thinking about other, other concepts here is, you know, do you have this village space where people can go and, and not have to drive anywhere in their cars? They can get here, they can come by bus or however they get here and, and do that. I would also say, it seems, people will probably hear this around, but it seems a little low-density to me and a little bit as to what this area could be. And thinking about it from 10 or 15 years or further out, what this whole area is going to turn into. So those are my, my comments on that.
Commissioner Schröder?
Mr. Shear, thank you. I, I too like the, the mix of uses here. But I think the, the use that's missing, and it's not actually a programmed zoning kind of use, is the idea that we're bringing people here and people will live here, but we provided no space for them on the site. You're either walking to the building or walking to France Avenue or walking to promenade. But there's nothing actually here that actually encourages gathering at a place where people naturally are. And we might suggest that we can accommodate that on the promenade, but still there's nothing here for the people who are already here. There are some developments, and I'm, I'm thinking just down to the south of here, on the, the retail at Centennial Lakes where they, they created kind of a plaza-like space related to retail. It actually is pretty, I'm not going, no, we won't go into that. I think we could do, I think we could create a really stellar example of how people can come and gather on a site when you have the number of people that come to Byerly's on a weekly basis. And you add to that housing and retail and proximity to the, the promenade, we create something that's actually more, I, I think, like Commissioner Platter was saying, that's maybe not town square-like, but certainly accommodates gathering of people much more than what we're seeing here. So when we talk about the mixed-use, and maybe this is what Commissioner Forrest was getting to, there's nothing for people who are just on the site. It's just about buildings or parking or people walking between the two.
Other comments on the use? Commissioner Carpenter?
I wonder if Commissioner Schroder can, at least for me, clarify what specifically, maybe not specifically, what generally you're suggesting beyond just the concept so that I can help get my arms around it a little bit more?
Well, on the site plan we have, look around the buildings. We see nothing but sidewalks. And sidewalks are not, we have one that says patio, but I don't know that that's really it because it's not linking you to anything. I look at like the spaces outside the, the lobbies. Is that an opportunity to create something that is reflective of the kind of environment we might find on the promenade? Trying to draw some aspect of the investment we've made in the promenade somehow onto the site. It, it's a little bit difficult because we have a private realm enterprise here and we're kind of suggesting that there's publicly oriented activities that might want to happen here. But this is, this is a site where, because of the uses that are happening, we're inviting people to the site. It just seems we should do a better job of somehow suggesting to them that they can come here. In our, in our grantee process, we talked about creating go-to and stay-at places. It's a, it's not the common kind of language that we use in planning. But if we, if we want to encourage people to actually come here and be here, we ought to be thinking about ways that attract them beyond just the core functions that relate to the economics of the site. And somehow I think that gets reflected in the character that might someday be extended along all of France Avenue, that it's not just about France Avenue as a major thoroughfare in Anidana. It's about trying to create this development that has a presence on the street that somehow invites people. It's part of the problem we saw with the last sketch plan where they talked about creating an active pedestrian environment, but the space they created could never achieve that. I don't know what the solution is. I don't know how you'd actually do this on this site. But it just seems like that notion of creating a place for people on this site hasn't been achieved here yet. And, and I understand it's early, but it's something, I mean, you're asking for direction. I think that that's something that we should ask them to explore a little bit. And not just to push it all to the promenade where you'd normally think you'd put it, where we already have some investment in infrastructure for that, but actually bring it to where people are already at at the site, front doors of the building.
Commissioner Shear?
Just to dovetail on that thought, which I like very, very much. If, if I look at the France Avenue access point on this, it is essentially in this design, a wall with no access unless you want to walk around the corner on a sidewalk on Hazelton and come in the same driveway, then all the cars will come in to access the parking. And, and, and I think, you know, there's a lot of room for better development of that kind of inviting in and access. This is really, while I support the general concept, two large buildings in the middle of a parking lot and no change from the France perspective. And. And that troubles me a little bit from a PUD usage perspective and what we would be encouraging in this area of town. I think there are ways to improve it, undoubtedly, you know, in subsequent design elements, but I'd like to see the developers look at that. One other point that I would make that I'm struggling with a little bit is, I absolutely appreciate your owner's desire to get the loading dock, you know, away from the front of their building, et cetera, et cetera. But where it is now, as opposed to its previous location on the north and south, is now we've got one big loading occurring right adjacent to a promenade. And that doesn't feel right to me either, and I wish there was some way to play with that a little bit and see if we could improve that, because that's gonna be a lot of traffic happening right on our beautiful green space, and that bothers me a bit.
Well, I think it's fair to say we've segwayed into the site design part of this. Absolutely. I actually think, I want this to be kind of a two-way conversation, so if things are occurring to you, I'd like to hear back from you as well.
Commissioner Schröder, really, it's directed to the conversation regarding a different use for residents and/or public. Are you, is the concern more for a public opportunity for use or a better opportunity for use for residents? Because those are two different things. When we start to talk about, with our client, about public access and public liability coming onto private property, are you looking for us to consider better uses outside to congregate for the residents that live here, or better places for the public to come, even if they're not shopping at Byerly's?
Yes.
Thank you.
I understand it's a difficult thing, and there are different ways to, I mean, you have a lot of roof areas. You could do things for residents on roof areas that haven't been explored in the concept plan yet. But I think it's equally important to think about how the public comes here. And most people who do come here, I mean, I go to Byerly's all the time, that the opportunity to actually create a stay-at place for a little bit of time is intriguing. And I think it depends upon the kinds of uses you have here. Even if you look at the kind of recently renamed, and now I can't remember the name, the shopping center across the street, used to be Leisure Lane, and it got... Yes, it got Francified or something. There is, there is, there is an attempt at a space there. And it's hard to characterize it as a great public space, because it's kind of smashed between parking lot and the building facade. But it's something. And I don't know how that translates into what I see as a larger and far more active site. I mean, it would be really interesting to think about how you might actually find a way to take the notion. The city started with the promenade, which is a link between Southdale and Centennial Lakes, and eventually Edinburgh. And how do you, could you think about development all along the promenade, finding spines that would actually lead to the front door of Byerly's, or the front door of a retail? So that there is a stronger kind of cross-connection, cross-connection, and the lines between the public promenade and the private spines are more blurred.
I guess I'd just jump in on that point and say that, you know, we've been spending a lot of time looking at a different area of town and thinking about how you create, how you create gathering places. And I don't think that necessarily has to be public. I think that can be private. I mean, what comes to mind for me is kind of what I refer to as open-source retail, which is kind of this Starbucks or other coffee shop notions. You know, years ago, when I was a kid, if you went and sat in a place like that for too long, they'd kick you out. And now they say, come on in, bring your computer, have a meeting here, do, you know. And what it has created is these places where people go to meet people and to gather. And I think it's just kind of that writ large that Commissioner Schröder is kind of trying to put his finger on, that are there ways, you have a lot of people who are gonna come to your site because you have an iconic retail outlet, and if you're gonna put residential there, that's gonna help, and we've got a promenade next to it, and how do we kind of work with that?
Well, I appreciate the clarification. I respect where you're coming from. Thank you.
Commissioner Fisher?
If I could just add on to that, I mean, I think it's a valid point. You know, Byerly's is a very unique property in that, of all the grocery-type businesses, it's the one that I feel more, is a more stay place than a go-to place. And it's just the character of the place today. And so, the opportunity, when you have housing on the property, when I think of housing, you know, you're gonna have your special party rooms and all the stuff that comes with housing, but that's very much a separate deal. I think, for me, who lives in the neighborhood to the west, and the person that's gonna live on the fifth floor of that housing, we might have an equal desire just to kind of meet some, you know, sit someplace and see your neighbors and friends. And so, it is kind of that, it's the Parisian street, right? But not literally, but I think there are those opportunities on the site, and it would really enhance, and I know, you know, you're not to that level yet, but just thinking in that kind of realm, I think, could really make this very strong.
Commissioner Platter?
I just have a comment. I mean, I'll just say it again, you know, it's great you're reinvesting in the community here, but when I look at this, I wanna go, well, what's the big idea? I don't quite see that quite yet. You know, what are you really trying to get at here? Like I said, to your point, it seems like it'd be a lot, can be a lot more fairly easily with what you're doing, and rearranging pieces, or something to that, so.
Further conversation, I think it's fair to say we were segueing to site design comments, and so, if folks have comments or questions or thoughts on that area, let's talk about that a little bit. Commissioner Potts?
I think, moving on to site, I'm going back to the first three points that Mr. Anderson stated, that I think, I don't understand exactly how they create the best use for this site, but they certainly cut off some opportunities, particularly, I think, having the front door facing west and the parking lot between the store and France Avenue, where there really is no access pedestrian, automotive, or visual, for that matter, because of the retaining wall there. I think if you, you've heard some comments about wanting to get a better pedestrian connection to that promenade, and I think there are other ways to do that if you relax some of those first three criteria you stated and look at other ways to use this site with the pedestrian in mind. It's clearly worked out for delivery access, for parking flexibility, but not so much for pedestrian or bicycle even, things like that. And I guess I have one question, and then I'll get off the floor, is about truck access. How many trucks a day come to the major dock? Can you give us a sense of that traffic?
It's, it's others say, usually done with all talking about one o'clock in the afternoon. So they come in the morning, anywhere between six and one. And I will say that when I come in that area, I come through the back way, and there's never more than two trucks waiting. I mean, at the most, there's two trucks waiting if there's one on the dock. I've never ever experienced a load of trucks that are idling, waiting to get into that dock area.
Thank you.
Ms. Kent? I keep catching this, like, when you're halfway through your sentence, but the next time, can you come up and just give some comments? Because there'll be some people watching on TV, and they can't hear you, and so. We'd love to have everybody be able to hear what you have to say. Thank you. Commissioner Forrest?
Did you say that the waiting trucks are idling meanwhile? Is that because of refrigerator trucks?
Come on up, come on up. The time is now.
In other words, it's a concern of mine that these trucks are idling all the time, partly for air quality, but I understand that there might be refrigerated trucks as well.
Right, maybe you just need to give us a little bit of an overview of how the business works from the loading, unloading, trucking, delivering.
Yeah, and I'm probably not the best person to do that, since I'm not in the operations portion of the store. When I come in in the morning at seven o'clock, there's usually a truck pulling in, and then there may be one sitting there waiting to get in that loading dock area. And usually, there's a loading dock area on the east and the west side, so there's never, like, three or four trucks, and that's not every single day. I mean, we get certain deliveries from certain different vendors on different days. So it's hard for me to explain our vendor delivery process on a regular basis, because every store's different, and every needs different. So I can't really explain it thoroughly on how many trucks and... And if they're typically idling, it's not, like, they're sitting out there idling forever. I mean, it's usually a very, they're very quick on in-and-out process.
Thank you. Other comments on site design? Commissioner Scherer?
Just for the record, and particularly for those people who might be at home, I did wanna make note of the observation in the city's packet that the city engineer has expressed concern with regard to sewer capacity in the area. And, you know, as we would proceed, there would have to be, you know, more formal evaluation of this, and, you know, if there were some significant upgrades or changes to the system, we'd need to talk about who would pay for those.
And I think that there was a question that came up earlier about uneasement, and that's a sewer easement, is that right? So that's driving some of this, and there is an existing, I assume, an existing sewer line there? Do you want Mr. Anderson maybe to address that briefly? Just to the extent it might be a constraint or a barrier or...
Certainly. In one of the sheets of your packet, in the civil design, probably in the back of your packets, I'll try to get to it, and I will in a moment here. Oh, yeah, you can see the line anyway. The easement's more detailed on some of the civil plans, but that particular sanitary line is quite deep, it's quite large, and very flat. With that, we understood that from the city engineer. So we said, well, moving it could increase the length of it, and you don't wanna do that to a flat sewer line. So our intent was to try to avoid it at all costs.
For those watching at home who don't understand civil engineering at the cities, it all works with gravity.
It all works with gravity, and the flatter, the worse.
The stuff goes downhill.
Yeah.
All right.
And it's barely doing that here.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Other comments on site design? Commissioner Carpenter? We can get to your laundry list now.
That's okay. I'll work through it. There's a question with respect to this new drive that gets from the Macy's site. Is that, is that an existing drive? That's new, it's brand-new? How is, what kind of guarantees are there in terms of whether that's gonna be available for the infinite future?
The conversations right now with Macy's is that would be a licensed access point for use of both parties.
Terminal at any time, then?
In negotiations, at this time, along with the shared water ponding feature to the east. It's in conversations, and been well-received by Macy's thus far.
Okay, as I say, the speculation, to some extent, has been, how long is that Macy's site gonna stay the way it is right now? Or that's gonna get redeveloped? And I'm just wondering to what extent, and this obviously is something that's not yet known, but to what extent that will be a reliable access point for the future? If it's short-term, then what we talk about with respect to the balance of the site in terms of traffic flow kind of gets impacted by that.
One quick comment to that. Because of the sewer line that we talked about briefly, more than likely, that is gonna be there for a long, long time, because no one would probably build over it unless the funds were available truly to relocate it. So if there ever would be access between the two parcels, that would probably be the most opportunistic, long-term.
This is in no particular order, it's random. As I understand it, the parking on-site is pretty much maxed out. And so, and if I'm correct on that, then if we talk, for example, about snow removal on the site, how would that be handled? Would that be trucked out, then? Is that, I'm not sure how you stay within the parking requirements if there's no place for snow removal at this point. I don't know if you can speak to that at all, or not. I'll just raise it as an issue, and you can deal with it as you wish. I mean, I guess that Commissioner Schröder might have more to say than I might have with respect to these rain gardens, et cetera, but I'd be curious to know, I'd be curious to know what your thoughts are on that when we get, when you get to that point, because I expect that you'll have something to say. I just raise it as a question. I'm kind of wondering how long they can exist, and how successful that will be. I'm really curious about this traffic flow that runs between the two buildings. It looks like three lanes that run into what almost looks like a funnel as it heads to the back of the housing, the future retail, future housing building? I'm a little confused by it.
Yes, Byerly's will have a parcel pickup there where folks can pull in and have groceries loaded into their cars. There's two lanes to allow two vehicles to do that and some stacking there. And then a bypass lane for a third vehicle not being loaded to pass through in that direction. The idea, though, is to limit the traffic in that direction so that it's not to create more congestion than is needed or is necessary there with the housing traffic. So it would narrow down to one lane for people going.
I'm just envisioning a situation where somebody sits there and gets their trunk loaded up, and they pull out, as the same time, somebody's coming through that bypass lane. It just seems like it's, the way it's designed strikes me as something that's apt to encourage some kind of an altercation at some point.
We may need to look at that.
And then with respect to Hazelton Road, the two access points there struck me as close. I don't know what the ordinance is require, or from a traffic flow standpoint, what would be most appropriate, but I just raise it as a question, and I'm not sure what you do about it. I'm gonna guess that you can't go too much closer to France Avenue either. But I just raise that as a thought.
That is the existing curb-cut location.
Those are both existing?
The one is on the westernmost, and the other that straddles a property line, I think, right now is just a little bit east of there. You can see the remnant of the curb-cut on the drawing.
Okay, okay, I appreciate that. That's all I have right now.
Commissioner Platter?
It's on my list, too. So a couple things here. One thing to consider is, the city's moving towards a living streets ordinance, so I would suggest you look into that and how that approaches to these sites. It may not be completely imminent, but the city is definitely moving in that direction, and how all these streets within this site will be, you know, accessible to pedestrians biking, other pieces like that. This is a kind of a overall site plan issue, and some people may be not like that I bring this up, but did you consider putting, having the housing separate, at least the housing that's on top of the Byerly's more to be along the promenade versus on top of the store, just from the standpoint of, it kind of gives way some of the densification, but what I think it does is it allows more, housing along the promenade allows that to activate that much more and gives people almost direct access to that. That would, in my mind, probably give you a lot less expensive solution either, as you're gonna have to deal with the grids and the housing and everything that comes through your store if you have that housing on top. I like the idea of the other one, that's smaller retail, that's probably not as a bigger deal. And then, kind of getting into a few more details, but, and just, my concern is all your refrigeration equipment generators, et cetera, et cetera, and how that's quiet enough for that housing up there, you know, just getting close to that. And then finally, on the parking, at least your site plan has parking spaces at nine foot or nine foot six. You know, have you considered looking at eight-foot-six parking stalls there? And the other thing I would say on parking is, it looks like you have a 5.0 per this, for the retail. Have you considered other ideas? I mean, do you need 5.0, or is that something you're doing because that's what the ordinance says? Now, we're in a PUD situation, where if you can mix and match and provide other benefits of reducing that, say, in garden space or something else, you know, that might be a consideration we would look at. At least I would look at. Thank you.
Chair Stone? I just wanna go on record saying, you know, Byerly's is the one place I can go and not have my car all scratched up. Now you're gonna ruin all that with your fancy ideas about smaller parking spaces. I'm just kidding, but...
Don't you want trees?
That's what I was assuming, is that there's something to that.
Good, that answers all of my questions, thank you.
I guess we're done here. Commissioner Potts?
Back to the parking count question. I wonder if you could address that, perhaps relative to some of the other stores. relative to, to some of the other stores. The five per thousand seems excessive to me as well, and I think if you are willing to relax that, we would certainly consider that, and it would also leave you more room for the open space we've been asking about.
I think all of our parking is always to code. We, I missed the last part of your question, about the second part of the question. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm curious if, and I don't expect you necessarily to have this at your fingertips, but some of your other stores, for instance, the, the downtown store with housing above the store, is that parked as intensively as this is proposed, or...
That is parked per code, and there's absolutely no residential parking in the, in that area. That, all that parking is down below ground. So, we try to stay within code. We typically don't have compact. I, I would have to look at whether or not they'd be interested in doing some compact parking, but like I said, it's part of our brand to have the bigger stalls at the Byerly's stores. So, it would be something we think about.
Excuse me. For my part, I, I appreciate the stall width. I think that's great for a grocery use in particular, and I think it's more getting at the count. I consider you to, or ask you to consider reducing the parking count in order to open up more space on the site for other uses.
Yeah. I, we, we can investigate that. I'm not sure where they would go with that. I mean, we, we would possibly consider it. So...
Thank you.
Commissioner Schroeder?
I will get to Commissioner Carpenter's rain garden question eventually, I suppose. But I, I want to get back to the loading dock, because when it was described, you said you would use planting, birmingham, and screening. But we're planting, birmingham, and screening, a feature that probably occupies 10% of the site area you have. You didn't describe it as we could create an amenity, or an activity, or a feature, and I think we need to turn that around. If you have something that occupies 10% of the site, I think you should be creative in how you're actually going to integrate in the site, instead of isolating it from the, kind of the patterns of use on the rest of the site. I don't know what that means, but whether it's artful screening, or, there's got to be some solution that takes that much mass of the site and actually creatively incorporates it into the experience of the site. I'd hate to just see it say, well, that's the loading dock, set it aside, we'll build a wall around it, and no one will ever know it's there. It's 10% of the site. We're going to know something is there. The rain gardens, I actually like the idea, the pattern of rain gardens across the parking lot. Whether they'll actually function the way we want them to do, we want them to function in terms of their, kind of their hydrologic purpose. I don't, I won't comment on that yet, because I don't know enough about the soils or how we actually get water into them. Right now, they're still inbounded by curbs, and it's hard to get water through a curb into a rain garden. But in terms of the, the pattern that it creates across the parking lot, I think it's a, a good improvement across the parking lot. It actually takes a, an expanse of the parking lot, breaks it up with a useful environmental purpose, not just for the, the environmental function of hopefully cleansing some runoff in the parking lot, but hopefully providing a better place to grow trees so we actually get some heat relief. I mean, I, I look at this right now, the opportune places to park here would be in the shade of a rain garden. If you look at the south rain garden, there's no shade provided. Actually, look at these long expanses of green across the parking lot as an opportunity to significantly increase the number of trees you have on the site. In a place where they would actually grow, would provide some comfort for people who are parking there, and wouldn't necessarily detract from the way people would view to the front of the store. You still have these really broad corridors of view between them. So I, I think, Commissioner Carpenter, I think the rain gardens, in, in the scope, in, in, while I, while I want to refrain from commenting on their hydrologic function, there's no way that all of the runoff from these buildings, and the way the site's graded, and the parking lot, can get into those rain gardens and actually do much, I don't, I don't think. And in fact, there's actually a very large, below-grade chamber that's actually capturing water and probably infiltrating water here that will do a whole lot more than the rain guards ever will. But still, the rain guards are a visible demonstration that we're trying to do something positive, and I think we can create environmental and aesthetic benefits from them.
Commissioner Forrest?
Well, I have a few comments as well. Again, I, I'm, at first glance, anyway, I don't like the idea of it being, no changes as far as the position of the buildings. It's, it's kind of more of the same. Buildings in the middle are pushed back toward the side or back of the lot, surrounded by a sea of parking. I don't think it's a friendly-looking thing. I don't think it's necessarily the best functioning thing either. We need to understand our demographics in the area as well, and the fact that we're trying to promote a, a healthy active lifestyle among our residents, and that's why I've kind of been focusing on the whole pedestrian and bike thing. More than, well, let's see, it's, what was it? 2010 census, 20.7% of Edina residents are over the age of 65. And we want to promote pedestrian access for those people as well, and transit, and bicycle. The auto entrances, as they now are, I, these are just my personal preferences, and they may not, in the end, be totally appropriate, but I'll tell you what I'm thinking. The auto entrances, especially when you have two lanes out, which I think you have now so that people can make left turns more comfortably, especially because they are uncontrolled at this point, I'd like to see a relief island between the incoming and outgoing lanes for pedestrians. The, when I look at the pedestrian flow from the promenade over, once they get to the dock area entry, they've got about a 50-foot wide span to cross where there could be traffic. Then you pass the housing and get over to parcel pickup. If you're going to grocery stores and you want to stay on that side of the street, well, that's not a pedestrian-friendly area to get in the way of people who are trying to load cars with groceries in an efficient manner. So that's going to be kind of a blocking point as well. Patio, I'd like to see that expanded in width and add awnings, make it a friendly gathering spot, and seating. That seems to be the drop-off point for people who are dropping off and picking up people for the grocery store. And it's, I mean, currently, at the Byerly's store there and in St. Louis Park, it seems like people kind of tuck theirselves, tuck themselves in somewhere along the long front facade, and it all works out well in the end. But sometimes there is some interruption as cars stop in front of the store. The patio stretch seems like it would be a great place to have that, maybe identify it as such in some way and open that drive aisle just a little bit more. The rain gardens, I like that, too. However, there are no pedestrian aisles in the parking lots, and that is somewhat bothersome, again, considering that there's a transit point, you know, bus stop area down toward France, and it'd be nice to have a clear route to that. The, it appears to me that the setback of the parking along France Avenue doesn't meet the 20-foot setback requirement for parking along streets from 20 feet from the right-of-way. It's really close, perhaps, but it's just, it seems a little bit short to me. It looks closer to between 15 and 18 for most of it. I would also like to see not just stairs, but either and or, or have a ramp functioning to go down to the France Avenue level to the transit point. Be, be nice to have a bicycle pen of some sort. I mean, granted, there will be some bike parking racks and things, but those are, are difficult for people to use in a lot of situations. Just as far as, especially for older individuals, they kind of have to pretzel it up in order to lean over, park, you know, walk their bike and do everything else. And there are other alternatives over there. I've been directed to look at some of the options that are used in England, for example, and I'm not familiar with them personally, because I didn't have time to look into that, but there are other options that really could encourage people to ride their bikes there. I have a friend who would ride her bike to Byerly's now, but chooses not to just because it's such a mess trying to park a bike there. Consideration of people who are in wheelchairs and scooters, we have our ADA recommendations, but there's a lot of things that can be done beyond those recommendations. The East Egress, Ingress-Egress Drive, there you're sharing that driveway with not only your loading trucks and your cars that are exiting from, after parcel pickup, but also with your truck traffic, and your housing is, is going to be mixing, commingling. And if the numbers aren't great, that might not be a big issue, but it's, it's something to consider, that that is a change in the current traffic pattern. And then you've also got your people coming from underground parking, it appears, and trying to enter that lane as well. The, oh, also, it, for the bus stop, it would be nice, I, I agree, I think it would be really nice to have a sidewalk on that upper level. It would be safer than having people down by the street if, if Edina chose to eventually put a street-side parking, or sidewalk in place. And it could be landscaped in a comfortable manner, and at least above the bus stop, have an area that has a shade tree or two, and some benches, a place where people can comfortably rest. I think that needs to be taken into consideration throughout the site to a certain extent. I'd like some of the goals and objectives of, that are in our ordinance for mixed-use parcels to be considered, and one of them would be public art, and not meaning just sculptures, but perhaps there's an area in the retail building, perhaps there's an area in the store that could be used to feature local artists. Byerly's and Lunds, there's such a huge connection to the community, and this is such an opportunity to build goodwill and really feel like you're participating in the growth of the city and the, and meeting its objectives. And I probably have more scribbled all over here, but I'd have to find it. Somebody else talk now.
Commissioner Forrest?
I'd like to...
You're up next.
I'd like to refer to people, too. I found a great resource and was told by somebody who kind of specializes in this kind of thing, too. The Georgia Department of Transportation has a great paper on pedestrian traffic and how to make that safe, and it's, what else was I going to say about that? Oh, the other thing is to be aware of the surfaces that you use for walking, that pavers are tripping points very often for older individuals, and vibration points for people who are in scooters or wheelchairs. So perhaps stamped concrete or asphalt would be better in some of those areas. That the sidewalks be, or the crosswalks be clearly delineated. There are several points here that would need that, and, and I think including signs about, you know, stopping for people in crosswalks, and especially between the grocery store entrance and the southwest corner of the retail building. And that, be aware that, that scooter and wheelchair traffic, you know, also has its own needs, and if we want people to get out more, and they have different abilities, let's make it so they can.
Other comments? Let me just share some of my own, just concerns. I'm sure this is, you know, you mentioned you've been noodling on this for a year or better, and I, I can appreciate that you've probably thought through this. It's, I, I think the biggest challenge is figuring out how not to put, you know, not to put your back to France, but not to put your back to the promenade, and how do you, how do you balance that? You know, I'd be curious if you've thought about any other kind of just configurations, really of the second building more than the first. It looks like to me you're trying to create its own parking field between it and the promenade. Was there any thought to bringing it up along France or along Hazelton, or wrapping a corner, or trying, you know? And I don't even know what the consequences of that is, but, you know, any benefit of your kind of noodling on that might be, might be helpful for the discussion here as well. Or was there even thought about maybe more than that? You know, you've got one building in addition to the place where the restaurant is. Was there thought about more than one structure like that? You want to share any of that? Anything you can kind of enlighten us with on that? Kind of your thought processes, you went through that?
Yeah. First, just to say that the parking between the second retail building and the promenade is surface parking for housing, not to support the, the retail use. That parking would, again, be on the France Avenue side in order to separate out the, the retail from the pedestrian or from the housing use.
It looks like you've kind of deliberately tried to create that housing pocket there, separate from the retail parking.
Yeah, and you, and you're exactly right. The challenge is to, to balance the promenade. There is no back of the site. I mean, it's very four-sided, and so there's some, some challenges to that. As far as creating more than one building apart from the grocery store, certainly if we're trying to do housing above, there's an advantage to working with a single plate. But we did take a look at doing something on the corner of France and Hazelton as well. The, the issue there is that it consumes a, a good deal of parking that, that is needed, and does some damage in terms of views of the store for vehicles from, from France Avenue, which of course is important to, to Byerly's, to maintain those, those views of the retail, to make sure they can be found easily.
But then if you slid that Byerly's part down closer to France, maybe people would see it around the corner.
Yeah, we've, we'll continue to look at that.
You know, the other thing that strikes me is you are a long ways, you know, the, the Byerly's customer with the wide parking spaces also, I don't think wants to walk all the way from the corner of France and Hazelton to the front door. So those might not be the prime parking spots, except on that day before Thanksgiving when everybody in the universe is there. Other thoughts from the commission?
Commissioner Stone, or Chair Stone tonight, I guess.
Yeah, how about that? Commissioner Schroeder?
The, the issue about configuration of the building on sites, on, on the site is interesting, because I actually look at it, the continuity facade, if you look at where the retail building is placed, and how it leads to the front door of Byerly's, I think that's not a bad configuration. I don't know that pulling it up to France Avenue or trying to make the building itself address France Avenue would solve site problems. I actually think that if you, if you think about how that, and it's shown as kind of a broad sidewalk now, maybe it's a, a broader sidewalk, maybe the building front is more arcaded. I think you could create a very interesting pedestrian experience along there that would, that would make sense of this configuration. I, I'm, I'm not troubled so much by the configuration of the two buildings on the site as I am some of the other things that might happen on the site.
Among the commission, you know, one of the other things that comes to mind for me is just what to do with France Avenue. I mean, is France Avenue ever going to be pedestrian-friendly? Is it, and if it is, we're, you know, we're kind of building a wall and we're leaving, we're leaving whoever's out there walking to fend for themselves. It's not exactly a friendly hike from there to the front door. I, I don't know, maybe it, maybe it's not realistic to think that that's going to convert to the kind of pedestrian environment we're thinking about, but we were just talking about, you know, a block away on the other side of the street, a PUD, where we're trying to create that street-level notion. Anybody have thoughts about how that fits in? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, I always think that people think we're a little bit on the nutsey side, because we're, we're talking about a future vision, and yet I'm pretty sure that's grass with a worn dirt path on the other side of that little wall. There's no sidewalk down there.
Yeah.
So somehow, inexplicably, we have a bus stop with no actual sidewalk to it. That's where we're starting from.
Get the parachute in.
So, so I always, you know, I'm thinking, as we described what we'd like to see, it's a, quite a departure from what we have. Now, I think we need to think about that connectivity, and I think it's a very interesting, at least what I was hearing from some of my fellow commissioners, this idea of maybe the sidewalk doesn't ever happen down at that lower France Avenue level, that there's something happening at this upper level that's much better, and then you connect to it on either end at some point. But again, it's got to be part of a larger system, and you have to start someplace, and I think that's just something to think about in the development of the site. So how are we getting people from France into the development? And I think frankly, long-term, being a resident of the neighborhood, you know, the Cornelia neighborhood to the west, when we first moved here from the east coast, maybe a dozen years ago, we ended up living, renting, short-term, in the apartment building right by the YMCA. We had two really, well, three very small children, and it was the best thing ever. We, we, we would come to Byerly's on our bikes, by foot. We had access to all the retail. We would come to Byerly's on our bikes, by foot, we had access to all the retail along the promenade. And then we moved into the neighborhood, and we were cut off. It's like, wouldn't think of walking over there, it's too dangerous. So I mean, there is a lot to think about in how we connect these neighborhoods with this. As I think about the grocery store building itself, I know we always want to pull these things up to the street, at least that's been, you know, the last several years, what we've been really trying to do ever since we've been working on the comp plan. But grocery stores really are a different animal in that respect. And I think we have to be careful about, you know, the parking field is pretty critical in that. And I do think, I'll agree with Commissioner Schroder, if I was understanding him correctly, I think there are ways to make the pedestrian connections and still have the parking field where you need the parking field. And there is this other issue that, you know, which is why I asked the question earlier about the utility easement. I mean, that's a real deal, and we can't, you know, that's got to factor into this. I'm intrigued a little bit, when I first looked at the site plan, right away I'm trying to think, how do you rearrange, you know, the other building, and is there a better configuration? And, you know, sure, they spent a year on it, but I'm sure we can figure it out pretty quickly here.
That's my theory.
Yeah. We are so smart. But, but it is interesting, as I really look at it, and, you know, there is the issue of how we connect to the promenade, obviously you've heard that over and over. But there is something about the orientation of the buildings, and able to have two housing lobbies share one field of parking, creating a little environment back there that feels like you're not in it with all the shoppers. So there's some, obviously some real strengths in some of those ideas. And I think, you know, obviously there's room for tweaking and other things. I also look at the loading dock, and of course, the first reaction is, oh no, it's on the promenade, but I don't know, are you gonna put it on France? Are you gonna, I mean, there's really a limitation of where you can put it, so I'm not sure it's in the wrong location. I do think the devil's in the details there, and how it really gets done, and I think Commissioner Schroder, again, threw some ideas out there. It's, I think about Target. Really, the loading dock location at Target isn't all that dissimilar to this in terms of its orientation to the promenade. And yet it's, you know, compact, it's designed in there in a way that you just kind of go right by it. Now granted, there aren't people living at Target that need to get to the promenade necessarily, so it's a different design criteria, but I'm confident that that can be worked out somehow. But it's going to be a concern, and again, in how, in the details and how it gets done. I think that's all I have.
Commissioner Scherer.
Just two items. With regard to Commissioner Fisher's last comment, I do recall that when we had all of the Target discussions, they committed that they would be doing all of their loading and unloading at night. So it would happen at a time period when we wouldn't have, you know, pedestrian people and others in the neighborhood. Now, I haven't monitored them, I don't know whether that has held, but I do remember the discussion. It wasn't from six to one during the day, which is what we're talking about here. To our chairman's observation earlier about, you know, this France Avenue thing and the user-friendly, I guess that I'm not willing, even though it's a wide street, even though there are natural barriers, I guess, the way it's currently constructed and used, I'm not willing to give up the creation, because as we look at things like adding more people that are going to be in the neighborhood 24/7, because they're going to live there, which is exactly what this proposal is putting forth, I think as you bring more people into the neighborhood, kind of like the Centennial Lakes end of it, there are going to be more and more people who, if given the opportunity, would utilize this kinds of, this kind of, you know, sidewalk transportation or easy access. If we don't have it, they won't use it, and they'll just all drive their cars. I think we have, it's kind of an if you build it, they might come concept to me. And as we look at bringing in more people, I think we really want to try to continue with that philosophy of providing easy access, or as easy as possible. I do like the idea of pulling it up to the level. I mean, if you have to raise the level of the parking lot, there is maybe a way to do that, and then avoid that narrow little track element down by France. That's appealing to me.
Certainly, if we're going to have more residential in this part of the community, it's not unreasonable to expect the transit use to increase as well, and so folks who are out there who may want to be accessing the store from that is, I think, something to think about. Commissioner Platter, and then we'll come back to Commissioner Forrest.
So I just had a comment, and maybe you've already checked it, but do you need a fire lane on the south side of the store? Is there a fire lane, does that have to go around the building there? And part of the reason I'm asking is that the loading dock just bugs me for some reason. So, and that could be, could that be a truck access somehow, so you wouldn't be taking trucks across the pedestrian piece on the other side there?
I think from a fire lane standpoint, and we have not talked to the fire marshal, but it's likely that they would be able to fight a fire from the Macy's lot, rather than requiring a fire lane around the south side of the building. And I think for us to bring truck traffic around behind the building, it means that our building plate moves to the north enough that we can't construct it and leave the existing store in business.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I just missed that last one, you can't construct it and miss?
We can't construct it while leaving the present store operational, if we move the new store north.
So you gotta do, open, close one day, open the next day deal.
We're building a ship in a bottle, yeah.
Yeah, the only comment I have to that is, you know, I would check with the fire marshal, because there's nothing guaranteed that the Macy's lot will continue to be open forever over there. So I'm not pining for it by any means, but it's something to consider when, so you don't get too far along and you get stuck somehow. It's obviously a good point.
Commissioner Forrest.
I concur, as far as when Commissioner Schroder talked about the flow between the two buildings, but I'm still a little bit bothered, again, because it's another residential building, and both of them are so far from the bus stop. This is the type of housing that, say, our medical center area workers may use a lot in this housing. And there's not even a clear pedestrian walkway from either one of them to the middle of the lot there on France, that, you know, is dedicated. I don't know if it's possible to, you know, widen and/or dedicate part of a rain garden aisle or something, but it would be nice to see that done. I noticed that there's like five different things going into that aisle, or the drive aisle on the east side. You've got your loading dock, you've got two apartment underground entrances, you've got, and then you have, well, the park, the outdoor parking and the parcel pickup parking, all of that is kind of filtering through that same area along with the trucks. So it's, it's kind of crazy. And then also the whole loading dock waiting and turnaround area, that's like 40 feet from the promenade right away. That's pretty close. And I mean, there's not a lot of room for birmingham even at that point, so I don't know if there's a fix for that, but I think that needs to be really something we're aware of, and work with it in a way to maybe do some screening. I love the fact that there's green space around there. Again, that would be an area that could be a potential gathering spot for people, whether with picnic tables or whatever. So some overstory trees that are, provide some shade, things like that would be great, too.
I would just chime in on the, on the promenade, I think, I don't have the answer for how to deal with the loading dock, but I think the way we need to think of it is kind of as a riverfront, almost. I mean, right now, we kind of have a trailhead at one end and a trailhead at the other end, and people, you can't come out in between, and we want to figure out a way to make it more porous. So, and you're early in that evolution, but my vision would be that eventually it's a place where you're walking along, and there's places where you can kind of hop off to this or that or the other thing. And I recognize that the one parcel would, you know, that you haven't been able to negotiate anything with, would help with flexibility on that. But somehow, as you're working with this, it seems to me a great amenity for the housing client, tenant, to be close to this, and to make it easy for them to be able to utilize it and make it an asset of living there. You don't want them half to fight through the truck path and the rest of it to get there. And so somewhere in there, I think that's an area to focus on as you're, as you're kind of expanding on this. Commissioner Potts.
Just to briefly reiterate that point, I think if there's a place that's going to be activated by pedestrians, it's the promenade, it's not France Avenue. Think about it that way.
So the other area that I wanted us to just comment on, and I recognize you're very early on in this kind of design feature, you don't even have a housing partner yet, but any kind of design features, and I would actually put Mr. Fisher's comment about height into this as well. If there's, you know, if there's feelings among the commission about the height issue, I know that can be, it can be an issue that creates a lot of strong feelings in our community. So if there's, if there's height or other design issues that you want to let the applicants hear about, this would be a good time. Commissioner Potts.
I'll start in, I guess, Chris has identified on here where there are variances from the current PCD-3 standard, and like Commissioner Fisher, I don't have a problem with the height variance at all. In fact, I don't have a problem with any of these so long as, you know, we see continued work on this site to address some of the issues and concerns we've brought up. I would, you know, I support a development well done, and I don't see this as going way over the line in terms of FAR, height, any of that. And in fact, I would encourage you to consider scaling back on the parking again, to request coming in below the city standard.
I'm not distressed by the height either, and really, the variance we're talking about is, is just a few feet. I mean, they're at the, eight stories is the standard, is that right, Chris? And that's, I assume that reflects as well what our comprehensive plan permits?
Yes.
So, you know, you're not departing from what should be our expectation in the area, and I think you do have a story to tell in terms of the 24 feet you need on the first floor. Talk about vaulted ceilings. Other comments? Commissioner Forrest.
I'd like to see wider sidewalks surrounding the buildings, so that, and perhaps with some variance in the depth of the facade at different points, just to make it more human and livable, more human-scale, I guess, and also it could provide an area for landscaping and benches, and remove some of that sterile, this is a strip mall kind of feel. And I concur on the height and the, I'd rather see, I like the idea of a little bit less parking, and we don't want you to be underparked, but if it can be accommodated in such a way, if more people are, don't need a second car because the grocery store is right there, that could all contribute to a positive thing.
Commissioner Fisher, were you warming up for a comment?
Well, I would just say, from an architecture perspective, just make it look great. I mean, the height's not an issue. And just on the whole parking thing, which is not necessarily an architecture issue, I know you made a comment about you always meet code, or the ordinance requirements, and I know I sound like a broken record on this, but I think we overdo that. I think we're requiring too much parking. So we're building a whole lot of pavement, and not a lot about what we're really talking about here. So I would just ask you to not look so much at the ordinance, but look at what the demands are of the business, and mixing that with the right site design. And I think what we're saying is, as part of a PUD, we would really work with you on that and figure out the right answers.
From the applicants, any kind of reaction to what we've been sharing here? Any things that you want to, you want to say about what you've been hearing? Yeah, are you coming back? We promised we won't, you know, it's not going to go on forever every time you come.
Is there another meeting? No. No, thank you for your comments tonight, I mean that. They've been, they've been good, we respect where you're all coming from, and we'll see what we can do as we work through the design and continue on. One quick note, relative to staff parking, this is probably something I know the answer to, but staff parking back behind the building to the east kind of hurts the opportunity for promenade, but yet it puts the staff behind the building. And from time, we had some, actually, some parking identified there one time, and we left it out. Any comments to that?
So you, you're talking about where the...
If you look at, if you look at this here, up in these areas, we at one time considered some staff parking back there to allow more parking in the front, and then reduce maybe some of the parking in the front of the building. More green features and fewer parking spots. It pinches, like, you know, there's no backyard to this property, so it hurts the back relative to parking, yet reduces that amount in the front toward France.
Thoughts? Commissioner Schroder.
Staff parking is still parking. Put it with the rest of the parking. Don't mess up the opportunity you have to do something terrific on the promenade by sticking parking spaces back there. In fact, if you look at how the parking field is laid out, it was pointed out, those parking spaces that are at the corner of Hazelton and France, that nobody, I would never park there to walk to Byerly's, but they would be great staff parking spaces.
Or the health-conscious shoppers.
Not me.
I didn't say that, sir.
You're not trying to hide your staff.
I think the only question we would have is relative to process. How are these comments recorded? How are these comments identified? If they're taken, put together by staff and distributed? And then the next steps relative to your sketch plan process with the council?
You haven't been taking notes?
Seven pages.
Well, you know, our meetings are recorded, and I think, you know, there's minutes as well. Jackie is great at kind of keeping track of the minutes. It does go from here to the city council, and that's kind of the conclusion of the sketch plan process. And then it's, and then if you're proceeding with the PUD, then we start back from there with staff and getting in front of us. I, you know, I guess just to kind of conclude, I think, I think you're hearing from us that we think this is a great opportunity, we're pleased to see that you're thinking of it that way. And I really, I think you're hearing pretty positive response to the notion of mixed use, and just encouragement to take the challenge to, you know, to do something special with that, and think about mixed use as more than just residential and retail, and is there some way to kind of intermingle this public and private? You've got this promenade that's going to go by, and the more that's successful, we think the more it'll be successful for your housing tenants as well as your retail operation. And so there's, there should be ways that we can think creatively to really make that kind of something special. Obviously, on the site design, there's a, you know, we recognize that there's challenges here with the, with the site, and I think I'm hearing people say that the configuration of the two buildings seems, seems pretty on target. It's just a matter of how do you then facilitate the pedestrian use? Maybe some of those things we're talking about, that, that more gathering space type of use helps with some of that pedestrian circulation as well. And then I don't hear anybody objecting on height. It seems like that's in the right neighborhood. And design, obviously, you know, we're very early on, so a lot of that remains to be seen. Commissioners, have I, in summarizing, have I missed anything? Commissioner Forrest?
I'd just like to reiterate what you said about be creative, be innovative. You, you're part of our community now, a big part of our community. Everybody knows you and appreciates so many of the things that you've done. And this is an opportunity to just be a flagship, you know, a national beacon, so to speak, of what can be done to integrate a grocery store with a green space and other things. And, I mean, you could draw a lot of pedestrian traffic from the promenade, make that really welcoming and inviting into clearly an easy access point to the grocery store, and then you've got all those pedestrians from the residences around it, and say, oh, I'll just cut down the promenade and grab myself, you know, loaf of bread or whatever. So yeah, please, think outside the box, because we kind of like that here.
Commissioner Potts?
Let me just pick up on that, as you start to think about the architecture as well, and say, I think the advances you made in your store design at both 50th and France and Uptown Minneapolis were great steps forward. I think you're doing it again in downtown Minneapolis, and as Commissioner Forrest says, let's push for another step up. We'd love to see it here in Edina.
Okay, I think that, I think we've exhausted the comments on this, so I hope we haven't exhausted you, and we appreciate you being here. I hope we haven't exhausted you and we appreciate you being here and, and look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. I, I would just note for the record that I don't think, given the hour, that Chair Grabels in any danger of, of being relieved of his duties since I seem to have figured out how to stretch this meeting longer than any of his meetings. We have next on the agenda correspondence and petitions. There is a council connection in your packet. If anyone wants to comment on that, you can. But hearing no comments, I'll move along to chair and commission member comments. Any things that, of interest that members would like to share? I will tell you, just in terms of update on the Grandview District process, we, we did complete a public hearing in front of the Planning Commission on the 22nd of February. We are scheduled for two more steering committee meetings, one on March 29th, Thursday, March 29th, at the senior center from seven o'clock to nine o'clock PM, and then one on April 12th at the senior center from seven o'clock to nine o'clock PM. And then scheduled to appear in front of the city council to present the, the draft at their meeting on April 17th. So stay tuned and those who are watching, feel free to join us at any of those. We'd love input. At our last meeting, we did extend the public comment period to March 28th. And as a result, we'll be returning to the Planning Commission and, at the April 11th meeting to, to ask for the Planning Commission to recommend that we move this on to the council. Commissioner Forrest.
I sat in on a, a meeting of a community resident committee, subcommittee, whatever, that's focused on the future of the arts in Edina, hence my public arts statements tonight. And it was really interesting to hear what these people, many of them were artists, some, some of us were obviously not. And it was really interesting to hear what they perceive as needs in the community as far as integrating the arts into our lives more, including more gallery space for, and for wall art and, and indoor sculptures and things. And also more recognition and promotion of our Edina artists as well. So it's exciting to see what's going on and I think what comes out of that will be really useful to us as well, something that we can use to kind of guide us as we go into projects like this. So it was interesting.
Terrific. Thanks for sharing that. Any other comments? Staff, any comments to share, Chris?
No, sir.
Thank you for that succinct report, which brings us to the final item on the agenda, which is adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I would move for adjournment.
I would second that.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you all.